Monday, two, the city of Ellsworth will come to order. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so we're gonna start off with the consent agenda in the council minutes for March of 2022. Item number A I R dash twenty-two dash zero four six.
And the claim ordinance. All three.
Okay.
So anything, excuse me, that I'll say is on the airport minutes, reading there about the building repairs. I believe we are gonna get thirty-three thousand of that forty-three thousand back from insurance. It's gonna cost us about ten thousand from the windstorm. So we got the first nineteen thousand and then we'll get the remainder once the work is done. And there's some discussion on whether we wanna bid the entire roof or just the damaged portion. I don't think we can get an entire roof and the rest of the repairs done in that in that thirty-three thousand, so. More to follow on that, but just just to let you know, we are getting bids from two different folks to try to get the best price for the product.
This was damaged back in December during the windstorms and whatever.
On the Gala Clean or the Christine Sharfens that go on tone and why does the, why is the price vary? Like one time it was one ninety-five and then it was two ten?
Yeah.
So sometimes she cleans the locker rooms and sometimes she doesn't.
Okay.
We had some recreation classes going, so she did, but if we don't have a season, she won't clean those locker rooms. So.
Mister Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the March twenty twenty-two council minutes, airport advisory minutes, and claim ordinance A O one dash.
I'll second. Mister Bernard makes a motion to approve the consent agenda, the March twenty-two, twenty twenty-two council minutes, A I R dash twenty-two dash zero four six, airport advisory minutes, approve, we approve, A I R dash twenty-two dash zero four five, and the claim ordinance, A zero one dash zero three two two, that is item number A I R dash twenty-two dash zero five zero. Mister Scritchfield seconds that motion. Any discussion, further discussion, any need to take a look at anything? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, the motion carries. The consent agenda has been approved. Uh, the next section of our meeting will be petitions and delegations. Uh, this is where we made a little bit of a change over the last time, so I'll read it to you. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business not listed on its agenda. The comments that are discussed under petitions, delegations may or may not be acted upon by the council during this meeting. There's a five-minute time limit. Please stand and wait to be recognized by the mayor. You must state your name and whether you reside in the Ellsworth city limits. Does anybody have any public comment? For people eleven, no one? Okay. Onto unfinished business, Kirkham Michael update. Uh, that's agenda item uh, twenty-two dash zero four seven, and uh, you're gonna have some good information for it to run through, so.
Alright, yeah. Josh Beckman, Kirkham Michael, here presenting update on the projects we're working on in the city. Uh, so in your packet, you have our update that was sent out each, each month, and I'll just hit the highlights of each of these projects, but starting with the Tissue Basin project. The contractor was in and worked in the last couple of weeks. He did get the, uh, the pipes installed and burn installed on the north side. So the north basin is now complete. Everything has been seeded. The erosion control items have been put in place on that side. So really, everything on that side is complete. They also finished the grading work on the south basin um, and seeded and lengthened the slopes of that basin. And uh, the flatter area, kind of that plateau on the west end has been seeded as well. There is a little bit of seeding that still remains to be done. That's where the contractor placed the extra fill on the east side right along K fourteen highways. Very upper portion of that has not yet been seeded. Uh, I believe the contractor had ran out of seed and was trying to get some more seed and would come back in and finish that up. Um, so the, the dirt contractor is really complete with everything for now until we come up with a solution on what we're gonna do with the bottom of that basin. We have had a meeting with another consulting engineer that really specializes in that type of work, trying to drain out wet areas. Uh, we met on the town last Wednesday. He's gonna give us a couple of proposals on some solutions on what we can do there. Uh, so we should be getting that information here in the next week or two, and I'm sure that.
So what, what does it mean when it's a state away?
So that just means we're not charging working days to the contractor anymore. Um, so the project is really on hold until we.
How long are they gonna be like?
Um, I mean, it could take a little while to figure out what we're gonna do, and we also need to determine with KDOT is if this kicks or what we're gonna do with the bottom of the basin. If that can be included with this current project, we're really using the separate project. So depending on what that costs and what funding amounts we have left to use or if we can get additional money, that still needs to be figured out. We're hoping we can get a solution figured out here in the next couple of months, and then maybe uh, by next fall, we can have work done, but it's gonna take a little bit of time.
The, uh, the question was asked, what our appetite was for stopping after they get the seeding done, and I told him I would prefer that it look bad for one summer and we get a good solution for the next thirty years instead of continuing to throw three thousand dollars here and three thousand dollars there. So I think that we won't see Chahoy until the fall. He's kinda moved on to his busy season now. The work that he has completed, I think, looks pretty good, and then the seeding, the extra seeding, they did, uh, I believe Friday, I forget the, the seeder, his, his name, but.
Yeah.
Maybe we could do like a motor or something.
I did have a request for mud volleyball. I said no. There was a mud wrestling proposition. I said no to that. I know one thing that Delvin and I have to talk about is the mosquito spraying, because there's been some concern raised about mosquitoes this summer with the water, so. Um, I didn't see Delvin today, but I'll, we'll talk, talk about it tomorrow. Make sure we get some kind of solution for the summer, so it's not a mosquito pit for anybody going to the park.
The other question is on the basis. Okay, moving on, uh, the Turm Lane project of the one fifty-six and one forty, we turned in our, what we call our P S and E plans to KDOT. Uh, so they're still reviewing those. We've knocked out our final comments back. Uh, that project is scheduled to bid in June. Uh, so we should be getting final comments back probably towards the end of this month or early May, and we'll submit a final plan, and then KDOT's actually preparing the bid documents, the package. They will put that out for bid for a June, the third Wednesday in June. Uh, the multi-use path project, what says nothing new to report. I do have a couple items there. We did get our comments back to KDOT, the vice company that we turned in. I met with Dawn Hiskey. She was here in town for the district two highway officials meeting last Wednesday, and I asked her if we were gonna do another field check, because that was our assumption. She said no, that they were not planning on doing another field meeting. They went and stopped and looked at the project while they were here. So we're just gonna move on and develop final plans now at this point. We do have temporary amendments acquired that we needed to put in two pipes on either side of the joint drive over by the dominated. So we're good on the right away side of things. Now it's just a matter of getting the plans finished up and get up with that project, uh, probably this fall. I'm scheduled for August right now. I do need to talk a little bit with KDOT on traffic control, traffic handling on K fourteen highway, so I do wanna schedule a meeting with Carlton and probably representative from the city at some point. Uh, since we are looking to extend that large box at center of K fourteen highway, we need to be working right up to the edge of the highway, and so we need to go through the options on how we wanna control traffic. And that, that down with one lane there, try to keep two-lane traffic open, uh, which is gonna require some concrete safety barrier and a new entrance into the tiny house property, or we could just close that section off. So those are kind of the three options, but we just have a best, best option. Of course, there's different costs, so sure, there's different options as well. Uh, the cost share project for sidewalks, uh, we're wrapping up the plans on that, and still looking about having a bid right here pretty shortly on that, and we'll have a lot of information on that. We are, we are getting close to finishing those claims up for bid. Uh, the C-Clip funding application, uh, overlay on fourteen through downtown here. There's really nothing new going on there at this time. That project's a twenty twenty-three project. Uh, anticipate we'll get to working on that here towards the, uh, the end of the summer or fall and get those plans turned in, and we'll be on schedule for that project. The airport, electrical puncture, you guys can read that, uh, is working on putting in lighting, conduit cans for the lighting on the east side, and we'll work on the west side next. Um, and they're also working to put the pavement markings down, new runway, and hoping they complete phase one here pretty soon, with good weather, which.
And they, Brad said they hope to have the new runway operation by the first of May.
And then the last project, we submitted an application for the Donald Drive extension, um, to KDOT back in March, and it us, we'll be making those announcements on project selections here later this month. What we've been told, they have not made those announcements yet, but should be here in a for a standout on that, because they've got selected for funding on that project.
That is all that I have for the nine.
Is that north basin gonna drain or will it always have water? Because what we were told it was supposed to be dry too. Right?
Yeah, it should drain out. I mean, you'll have to check and see what's going on up there.
Cause it's still, it's still has water.
Water in there right now. Um, I know when they dug that down, it'd be, it'd dump a little bit of water up there, so. We thought once it kind of got, it should pretty well drain out.
But if it don't, then are they gonna have to look at breathing that too?
Uh, I mean, that'll be up to the geology once, try to find a solution for that, except, well.
Does the, the lack of seeding over there, does that contribute to the, the water, the standing water?
Well, you're really not gonna be able to see it.
Right, well, because we decided that cosmetically, the south was more important than the north. So we didn't seed the north basin, because we used that money to kind of fortify that north eastern area. So we kind of took the money for the seed over there to make sure that there wasn't, I guess, erosion control would be the best way.
We overexceeded some of the sand for the visual, so. Yeah, before that was all blocked off, so we weren't sure if that water was just holding there or if it was, was uh, something that's gonna be a continual problem now that it's opened up, and we'll get a little time and see what happens.
That's a good point. I will hear about you. It won't go in both. That's all, everybody. Josh, thank you.
Thank you.
Good review. Appreciate that. Next item would be new business. Uh, we have the director's resolution authorizing the cash back transaction actions to the state bank. That is item number A I R dash twenty-two dash zero four four.
Go ahead.
This is just if, um, for some tournaments, uh, for example, the golf course will get a check that needs to be cashed before we had our previous mayor on it. Um, and I was not allowed to cash checks, and normally it's Andrew or I that has to go get the check cashed, and so we were just updating that if that is allowed by you guys. Most of the time it's all.
Yeah, so it's really just a change in the signature course.
Yeah, but the other reason, trying to revenge, what I've changed it.
Well, we have to do it in May anyway.
Well, how do we get all of those?
Mister Mayor, I'm making a motion to update the the cash back transaction form. There's this and something.
Miss Hanson has made a motion to authorize the cash back transaction statement signature. Mister Scritchfield has seconded that motion. That is item number A I R dash twenty-two dash zero four four. Do we have any further discussion of that? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, so the moment we've been waiting for. I think what I'm gonna do after some thought is really kind of address both of these kind of the same time, providing the framework, because there's gonna be a discussion on these two items, clearly, so. But we don't get ahead of ourselves, but the city's been here a hundred and fifty-five years. It's been a long time. There will be other mayors, there will be other city administrators. This is, this is something that we go through from time to time. And we certainly appreciate the work that you provide here, Rusty, the achievements that you, you, uh, have achieved here. Maybe in a future meeting, we'll list those, it'll be a little more detailed, but I think tonight what we'll do is we'll get through these agenda items and kind of get the procedure started, and then we can kind of celebrate and make a little bit of air, if that's okay with you, so. Um, or not at all. Right, right, or not at all, that's right. So, the the search, um, a couple requests were made, and it was my idea also that the department heads be allowed to become part of the interview process. I like the idea. Um, spoke, speaking to them, they liked Rusty's leadership, his style. He allowed them to do their work. He, he supported them. They loved these last two years as, as department heads. They loved it. So they really wanted to, uh, have an input. I think it's a great idea. They're, they're the constant here. They're here all the time. We're gonna come and go. City administrators will come and go. They're here, so they really wanted that input, and I thought it was a good idea. So what they did was they came up with a representative, uh, Kenny Bernard, has an extensive H R background, far more than probably anybody in this room in his career, so. Think he would provide not only good representation of the employees and of the citizens, but just with a wealth of H R knowledge, so. When we talked to the, one of these search firms, I asked if he could make this adjustment, if he thought it would be okay, and he said, sure, that's okay. You know, we can do that. Um, so that was one adjustment. This is something you're gonna wanna discuss here. Uh, allowing that department head to become part of the interview process, and four of you have done this before. I think Jessica was on that. So you've got experience, so you can kind of guide us to see whether that's a good idea or something you wanna do or something you don't want. I love it. The other thing I've pondered over time, and, um, he also agreed to this. I said, what if we, we allowed resumes from people here in Ellsworth? You know, we're not gonna go out all over the country or all over the region necessarily looking for somebody. What if somebody here had a leadership capacity? They had, they already lived here. They, they were a member of the community, and we could kind of help them get the education they need. I said, that would seem to me a possibility. Can we at least, at least entertain the possibility of allowing certain citizens that already live here to apply for this job? And he said, I'm very open to that. Said, a lot of times it doesn't happen, but you know, it can, so. That's the other thing you're probably gonna wanna think about, um, whether that's something you wanna do or not, or whether you even want to use a search firm or not, so we can, we can talk about that, but. I wanted to provide that framework, so that as we have a discussion, you know, you know that we've been, we've put a lot of fun on this, so. Have I done a good job? Chief?
I believe so, yes.
Alright, I'm making sure.
I will say that Kenny Bernard is not a department head. He's, uh, was captain of the police department, been with the city full time since two thousand and ten, and as the mayor suggested.
Right. Kind of his resume.
He's got a re-experience task, and that was a collective decision from the department heads. It'd be not disappointing that we would like to have a representative on the, the committee. It's just a, a voice from, from us as the constant, and we would, we chose Kenny Bernard to accept it, while you guys are part of the process.
Alright, thank you. Maybe Kenny wants to be city administrator. Well, this is, this is, this is something we can discuss, so I mean. So with that said, let's kind of go back to the, um, new business item. It's the city administrator resignation. Rusty's receiving great opportunity. Most of you know it. Uh, he'll be leaving here June first, um, so that we can, uh, accept his resignation effective today. Uh, that is agenda item four A I R dash twenty-two dash zero four eight.
Yeah, so the, the only thing else, two things. One, uh, is it's been a great two years, and we got a lot of work to do in the next six weeks, so that's all about me. But I do wanna thank the city of Liberal for giving me the extra thirty days that I asked for, um, because my contract says thirty days from notification. So they could have said, no, you, you have to be here on May fifth when I, when I called you guys, but they, they gave, they gave us the extra month to, to get stuff up, or get stuff wrapped up as best we can and then work on the transition, so. I appreciate that.
So is there any further discussion on the resignation and any further details, or at least this part of it?
Mister Mayor, I will make a motion to accept the resignation of the city administrator.
I'll second.
Alright, Mister Bernard has made a motion to accept the resignation of the city administrator. Miss Hanson has seconded that motion. That is item number A I R dash twenty-two dash zero four eight. Any further discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The city administrator's resignation has been approved as of, as of today, April eleventh, twenty twenty-two. So the next item, kind of started down that road, was the city administrator's search firm selection. Uh, Rusty, if you wanna provide him a brief overview of the different options that we have, or possibly a segue into a discussion of doing it ourselves.
Oh, really? So you guys are familiar with, uh, Mister Ozenball and Mister Deardoff. They did the search last time. They have since, uh, just for scheduling reasons, uh, and their own. John's recently retired. He's got other stuff going. Don's working with, pretty occupied with K-Mit. It was hard to get, for them to get together, uh, get their schedules together, so they decided to open their own firms, so Mister Ozenball is seventy-five hundred dollars plus some expenses. Mister Deardoff is five thousand plus expenses. And the league, uh, Kansas municipalities is forty-six hundred plus some expenses, so. Um, I, I don't have an opinion on which of the three you should choose. I can tell you that I've gotten two jobs from a league search, and you know, of course, this job through Don and John, so. I have nothing but great things to say about all, all the parties.
And it was John that I spoke to, to ask him if he would be flexible. That's who I spoke to.
So the prices are all pretty close.
Then there's the option of the law firm. Handling the search.
Yeah. We, I, I, I mean, we, we were, I mean, we will, we love working with the city and doing whatever we can for it, but that's not something you've ever really done. I don't know how to do it.
Okay, I thought, I thought that you, you could.
You know, the last time we were involved in some capacity, I think the consultants wanted to, they sent to us.
Okay.
As we did.
Thanks for clarifying.
And Rusty, I look, you did the touch on this, but what if the league, there's some things the league is a little different on in terms of their search, and I think the council might just give my.
Yeah, um, so.
We didn't use them. Basically much less flexible.
They won't, I guess what I'm trying to say is, the league's reputation is that they will not, they don't want to, uh, interrupt a currently serving manager or administrator. They don't want to be perceived as, oh gee, you're taking someone, so they eliminate themselves with who they will recruit. Is that fair, Rusty?
Yes, yeah, they, they do not go after sitting assistant or city managers, um, whereas the other two have no problem calling and saying, Wayne, hey, this opportunity's here. If you'd like to make a change.
Well, I would think if they can, I mean, if there's local people that wanna try that are qualified, plus, I mean, I think we need to.
But I think we need to use, I like, I really like, um, Deardoff. I like Tim Owee in University. I really like Tim. And I just think they gave us great, especially having new council members on doing this. I thought he gave us great point here, so I, I definitely think not doing it ourselves, it's not an option.
No, yeah, we gotta.
John, John is, is very easy to talk to and, and very knowledgeable, very flexible, so, yeah. And, and Don does a great job too. I'm just a little less easy to talk to.
Yeah.
So less.
Right.
Both have good work. Don's like more aggressive than I think.
Um, so after you guys decide on the firm, uh, I think timeline would be important for you, and I would kind of recommend that, that maybe the mayor and the consultant formulate the job listing and get that out as soon as possible. Typically, I think you would probably meet with the consultant a second time in person and kind of go over that, but just really depend, I mean, our job listings are kind of what they are. I mean, you're not gonna come up with anything unique or special, just, so he, he's got stuff, whoever it is. They've got job listings, they can just change Ellsworth to Conoplis and, and go, but I would recommend just letting the mayor and the consultant kind of hammer out the duty description and get it out, and then if you guys see anything, you can always revise it, but just for the sake of time, um, letting, let the mayor do that.
On that note, again, in your orders, sample, advocate your contract, and to make sure you're changing the city, or city managers.
Well, yeah, I like that too, I think.
You like the idea of having a department head president?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And I like that they limited it to basically one person.
Right.
Yeah, I had three on the hiring committee in Liberal, which it was fine, because they liked me, but you know, had I not been their choice, that would have been, it's one thing to have one person not happy with you, but you have three not happy with you going in, that's, that could be tough, whoever the new folks are, but.
It doesn't take a lot of people there anymore.
You like the idea of a local person? We ask for talented local people.
Yeah.
I talked to Patrick about it. There is a program we think at K U that is designed for, you get a talented department head, and you think this person could do it. It gives them some basic public administration. It's a crash course to get them up to speed, and that could be something we entertain.
Yeah, so both Wichita State and K U and maybe K State all have the mini, uh, M P A, and then the course that all the department heads are going through now, the or the A M O went through last year and the rest are going through this year, the certified public manager course is also very, very helpful. As long as whoever it is will ask questions, they'll have a hard time failing, I'll say, or just, listen, you just make a bad choice, but I don't think you'll do that.
Yeah, he, John felt like there was talent out there, and we would, we would end up with somebody good, he felt, and I felt like he was being totally honest. He felt, and I felt like he was being totally honest, like just the pool of applicants is there. So we would be in pretty good shape, I feel like, just talking to him, so.
Did you select Deardoff Consulting as the search firm?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept Deardoff Consulting firm when a search for the new city administrator. Do I need an amount on that?
No, because it, well, the job listings and, I mean, the, the ads could vary and, so.
So Mr. Bernard has approved the motion to hire the Deardoff Consulting Company to do the search firm selection for the city administrator for the city of Elsewhere. Councilor Johnson has seconded that motion. Any discussion, any further questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the Deardoff Consulting firm will be in charge of the search firm selection. That is agenda item AIR dash twenty-two dash zero four nine. And Kenny will be on that committee, so we're excited to have him, so good job, everybody. Next item, department heads, recreation's not here. Golf course, any updates?
I do not have anything.
No updates from the golf course, streets not here, water, sewer, fire. Chief, do you have an update?
I don't have much. I did get the Durango sticker, if you seen it, you switched the stickers, what they were, what they were going to be. If you like it, sorry.
Determined.
And then, I mean, we have all the department heads, thank you for, thank our, our process consideration. And so you have time and look forward to do more in the city.
Thank you. Melissa, any city attorney?
Um, I received a contact from the attorney for retaining your investments again. He requested that I put in front of you the offer of would the city be interested in purchasing?
Who put you up there?
Being this very adamant that I present that to you guys, if you don't, I mean. The way that the abatement process works, just so we're all on the same page about how everything's going. You, he owns a property right now, you have the ability to tear it down right now. You can send the bill to him for the tear down. Whether or not there's money there to pay you back for that, I don't know. And the property, it remains in his name. So, I mean, if you buy it, you're taking on all of the liability at this point in time too. So Patrick and I have discussed, it's almost kind of maybe more of a timing question from our perspective. Like how much is it gonna cost to tear it down? I don't know how far we've gotten with the consultants, but that's kind of what we, we talked about.
I mean, if the city ever actually did tear it down, you would want to recruit whatever you could. The one thing that, that I was thinking about this the other day, since ever I started talking about this, and just always said, I want to know how much it would even cost. And I'm a little frustrated, still don't have an answer for that. Does the, does the consultant have a figure yet? You know, I just have always said, how much would it cost if you never told them it's a billion or ten billion or whatever it is?
Yeah, I believe the end of this month, the first of next month was their timeline to get their report to us in the RFP, so.
Does he want a dollar for it, like, you know, we can fuck for it?
Well, he didn't say. He really was just trying to gauge and he's pretty adamant that I couldn't say yes or no, but you guys had to get a petition. I told him out in front of you, I told him he probably wouldn't make a petition tonight. So, I mean, that's what I'm gonna tell him when I get back. As far as the actual suit goes, we'll either just keep extending it out and we'll keep the temporary restraining order in place, or if they will agree to not allow members of the public access to the property, then, I mean, we don't have any issues as far as that goes with the restraining order, from my perspective. Because then if anybody's on there, we know we're trespassing, because they should have permission from the park manager. So, but anyways, he's, doesn't want to get stuck with the big demolition bill.
Right.
And that's kind of where he's coming from, so.
I mean, in, in some ways, it, it's counterintuitive. You think, oh gosh, well, if we buy that, but it may be to our advantage, it may be we have to look at it. And maybe, you know, that would be.
And it's a timing.
Yeah, yeah. My opinion, once we know what the cost is and we have that money available next quarter, I think absolutely we'd buy it from.
We could probably quit or less headaches, a little less legal fees.
Yeah, we just don't wanna pick on the liability and just stay here for two years, waiting to see if we can ever, if we can tear it down.
I agree, those were, those were the comments, I think. We're close to, close to an answer, sounds like with a consulting company. How is wise to, to know exactly what this is gonna cost, knowing what to ask for, who can do it and can't do it. It'll be a big part of it, so, very good. Any other updates? Okay, city clerk?
Just going to do a reminder out, we are still seeking employment. We have a custodial position and we're very open and flexible to whether it wants to be a contract, an hourly deal. There are three different places they would be made, because we have renovated the rec center that is added on to the custody ward. And then also our water department, we do have someone retiring in the summer, so we're gonna be very, very short staffed. Just wondering about that, and we are still seeking.
City administrator, Mr. Bernard?
All right, um, the audit that was scheduled for April nineteenth is now gonna be this Friday, April fifteenth. Savani and Associates will be here in the building to, to get the twenty twenty-one audit knocked out. I received the RFP for the sewer project, I haven't reviewed it yet, but it's in my inbox today. So we'll get that to you at the next meeting, I'll probably send it to you to, to look at before we get comments or bring it out. The, the ARPA reporting, so the, the second bunch of COVID money was due at the end of the month. So that report has been filed, so we'll stay in compliance. And that is it, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions? I do need someone to talk for another, what? We, we have the over under and we're, we're, I have the over, so. You guys could do a little pontificating for the next eleven minutes, it'd be awesome.
We can, we can probably talk slower, right? So council members, Ms. Hanson? Mr. Bernard?
Uh, what drive with the Legion, uh, Friday? I don't know if there's an opening for this flood drive.
Very good, Mr. Bernard. Mr. Strickfield?
Uh, I will have the rec center on Saturday, the auction, lots, lots, other comments about what we've done with that building. Very pleased about that, I think they have a fair with all that, they put it on the floor after auction.
I was out there today and if, they did clean it, they used the court, I didn't, we couldn't even tell there was an auction there. So it held very nicely, we did use one of the tarp's from the gym out there on half of it. Yeah, it's on the gym.
I want to mention that the Fair Board was seeking about buying cover for that, usually what they use it.
So the Fair Board submitted a grant through Smoky Hill for thirteen thousand dollars. They were funded, I believe, a portion of that. So once we get a final figure, we can kind of move forward with that. The idea was if they would get us a thirteen thousand dollar floor covering with a machine to roll it, we would advocate comping them the building for a number of years, since they did the legwork on that. But once we get the final result from the, the, the grant cycle, we can get you an answer on what the delta is on that. That machine.
Councilor Johnson? Okay, all right, so on to the mayor. Thank you for making this a fairly succinct meeting, I didn't know it was better. You don't know. We're gonna definitely miss you, Rusty, we appreciate the work that you put in, preparation for the meetings, definitely helping the transition between mayors, you've done a lot, we'll talk more about it, the upcoming meetings. This is the challenge of the town, they want this job and people are out there, they think they've got what it takes, they need to apply for it. Need a little bit, I think, in my opinion, a little bit more buying to this position. We had that discussion, very interesting discussion over whether this is the right government for us. That's a very complicated, long-term thing to do, and that's immediately something that we just can't entertain. We have to hire another city administrator and support that person as, as well as we can. Without a doubt, whoever gets hired, some people like it and some people will not, I doubt that'll ever change. I think that's just the nature of the, of the position, and they have to have the thick skin like Rusty did that, to, to do that and weather through it. Do I think we can do a better job? I don't think there's anybody out there that disagrees that we could do a little bit better job in that area. And that will help us to hire a great person, they know that we're a supportive community, they're gonna want to be here. All right, so that's just something that kind of, that's the mood we need to, to have as we approach this search. Find the best person we can and support them. They're not gonna be perfect, they're gonna contribute in, in a way that, you know, that their talents allow them to, and that they're gonna have weaknesses, so that's just kind of the way it is. So I think luckily, through knowing Rusty, I've learned a lot about that position. And, you know, it is, it's a hard position to please everybody, it's very difficult. And I think we've done a pretty good job, and certainly appreciate all your help and all you've done for us. And then you're gonna do great moving on to Liberal, so just wanted to add those comments. And with that said, I don't think we need an executive session, we agreed that we wanted to do this as an open session, we did. So do you have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Ms. Hanson has made a motion to adjourn, Mr. Strickfield has seconded that motion. The regular council meeting for April eleventh, twenty twenty-two is adjourned. I guess I hit the gap, all right?
Good.